At this point, you know.
Yeah, we'll just go down, clear some trees.
Are there any drawbacks to doing it that way? I mean, any?
We just gotta wait till after the.
The bats? Yeah, okay.
I think.
That's it.
Okay, maybe we'll just, maybe bring that up to the council tonight, just so everybody's on the same page about that.
Sounds good.
So here's a clean page that Mike sent me.
Thank you.
And there is a death certificate on Linda Isena here.
Seven.
Um, and Mike said that we cannot put that in our name. Probably not. Yeah.
Well, yeah.
I'm not sure I understand that. He just said.
Do I do I just. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It has nothing to do with the grant. He said we had to wait until the grant was awarded before he can do it. So he said it would probably be up into September, October, week news.
No public hearing, no presentations. Department reports, we don't, we don't have any APCs or DOM out come here.
Eric is here for APC.
Okay. Eric?
Yes?
You're up right off the bat.
All right. Quick summary, we adopted the meet, uh, last meeting minutes. We inquired with Marcellus in regards to the APC orders rewrite what the update was. Apparently there was a slight contract delay at the end of the year. Has that been rectified? Yes. Okay. Um, all right. Derek Kelly, he's at eighty-one twenty-eight West State Road forty-seven. He approached us currently, it's worth a near the old Mill Run sign. Currently a hay field, wants to build storage facilities and he wants to be annexed. Um, currently he's on town water, on town utilities, he wants to build, and I don't know if his dimensions are correct. Three forty by two hundred foot storage facilities. He spoke with the county and he just said the county didn't seem interested, and I don't know what that meant. But he's directed to come to the APC to talk about next steps. So Marcellus gave him his business card and was going to do research on how they would put the next steps will be for the annexation. That is even what he wanted to do. But it's right across the street in front of the new house.
That lot on the corner.
Yeah, probably. Um, let's see.
I did talk to Marcellus too and gave him, um, a petition for annexation to give to the.
Okay.
Land that property.
Perfect, so we'll get an update on the process.
Yeah.
Is his, is it just that corner lot or is it his house?
He just discussed the corner lot, but I don't know what that encompasses. He's, he's a preliminary decision.
Yeah. Well, I didn't, I was wondering if his house was, I don't think his house is in for now. Leavitt's either.
That could answer. Was a very preliminary, he's basically intact. Um, let's see, Marcellus spoke with Dylan, uh, the owner of Trail Park with the alley. I don't know if you guys remember that issue. There was an alley that wasn't being used. Um, Dalton, who's on, a member of our committee, also checked with the, uh, he also works utility department, he checked the site. No issues in regards to, uh, sewer, uh, being running in that area. Um, and then a question came up, slider door for Arbor Homes, basically it's the window count, it's a sliding door counted as a window. It's kind of a building code issue, I believe. Uh, I think Marcellus will benefit from looking at that. Essentially, there is a issue where we require so many windows on the back of the house and our government's requiring about this sliding door. So those were the items we discussed. We had no answer on the slider door being considered. Any questions?
Is that sliding door supposed to be a decision we make?
Not, not at this point. I think we're probably still at the, uh, point where we're looking at the code and see how the code defines, okay? The window and once, if that is gray, then it's gonna probably fall back to what already happened to this location. But at that point, we're still in early stages of figuring out what that is.
You'd think Arbor Homes would know whether that's a window or not.
Probably. Maybe they're just putting it on us. Oftentimes when you're working with municipality, you just ask them the question and see what they say. It's not always the same interpretation, at least it's been my experience. Good?
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Uh, we don't have a building department, 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 police department.
Yeah, I got, I got one thing, just to let y'all know, um, we're probably going to lose Robbie. I think he's going to eleven. He's been in their process, his board of works meeting is Wednesday. So he's made it through all phases and I think after he gets to the board of works, they'll give him a conditional offer of appointment. The timeline, I don't have, I'll, I'll know a little bit better after Wednesday, but just, I'm sure he's probably gonna get it. So. Kind of need to figure out what we're gonna do. I've got a few people in mind that I could put in his place and I guess that just gives you blessings. I think this will, they'll probably be gone before next meeting if he thinks. A little time. Something that's to be discussed.
Would you do thank you, have a replacement?
I, I've got a few people at Idaho and Tupper. Going through their stuff now.
Okay.
Other than that, it's all right.
Thank you. Stormwater, we don't have any stormwater, you tell me about it.
Totally bored now.
Hmm?
Totally bored. I have a couple of things. One is, uh, I had a visit from IEDM and they are bringing up the issue again about the inflow infiltration. So Gary had, uh, conversed, that's why I can did came to town in the first place of your call. And they took care of that hot list, but now they're back on our influence flow and our F flow. We're allowed two hundred fifty thousand gallons a day. We're usually well below that, but like this just rate you just had, as we all experienced, it skyrocketed and they're pointing that out. So on an average, we're well below two hundred sixty thousand gallons a day on average. But that's not satisfying at this, um, at this moment. So I'm gonna have to start digging into that and find out what it's gonna take to identify, and I can't think should be a problem. The bad spots or liners might have to go, but we're back on that again. In response to that visit, I brought, um, Water Alliance of Indiana, rural, rural water of Indiana, brought them into a town to visit some of the comments they made and that very situation. They looked over all my test results from the pond and on a good note, they said our pond is working at an efficiency level that they do not see. In other words, uh, copper ammonia, as you know, the ammonia was a big deal, that's why the savings isn't there. But the copper counts and the money counts are next to zero, which is great. Our E coli almost does not exist. We have to test E coli twice a week, send it to lab. So these are the numbers that IEDM looks at. So our pond is working at the sixty percent efficiency rate as far as the input goes. So we still have room, water come in. We are pushing the input infiltration thing, but as far as the efficiency of what we're trying to do, ultimately what we wanna do is put good water in the creek and we're doing that. Uh, the other thing I do have for you is, um, we have a cleanup day coming up soon. So the crew will be going down the Mill Street. There's a ton of limbs hanging over at the ballpark or the softball. We'll be kept on the back, so if we do clean up, there'll be plenty of room for that. So that's on our list. So I've got one.
Okay, thank you. Uh, question, do you, do you have, uh, over in your vault, I know you're trying to clean things up. Have you got any paperwork that shows anything about the well leases that we have now?
I don't know, I can look. I'm not aware of any, but that doesn't mean they're not over there. I'm not sure why they'd be over there, but getting that doesn't mean they're not.
I don't know why either, but I, Creed says she hasn't ever seen them. And, uh, we don't know where the paperwork is. So I, I thought maybe it might be over there.
I think I've sent that, let me.
You haven't, Dan?
Something on it, but.
Yeah.
You've looked at it.
I've looked at it, yeah.
Looks terrible.
You sent it out, yeah, it's really old and terrible, yeah.
We do have.
I wonder if I do have it.
You do.
I think you do.
It's just buried in, it doesn't say lease up at the top, it's just buried.
And it may just be with a plant in a water folder because I didn't know for sure.
Yeah, probably.
Okay, yeah, okay. We can pull it out and see what it is.
Okay.
Does it expire here on hand?
Yeah, here a motion for the payroll minutes for the second, June second.
Make a motion for forty minutes for June second, point three five.
Another second.
Oh, second.
Long favor.
All right.
Close. Passes. Okay. Uh, payroll documents.
They're in that folder, that green folder.
They're in there too. We don't need to do anything there, I think. And it's up to you to report on the discussion on that.
Alrighty, I have a couple of different things. So last year, um, as we were doing budget, I brought up that we needed to be thinking a little bit about what we're doing with our health premiums. Insurance across the board is eating us alive and there's nothing we can do about that. It's the industry. So, you know, right, right now, for example, the town utilities, we're paying ninety percent of everybody's insurance and that even covers their family. So there are things we can do, we can either change the percentage or, um, we could still pay ninety percent for our employee, but covering family, we can make that percentage different. Or we can even go back to the rule that if that spouse is working and can get insurance at their place of employment, that they would need to do that. I, I'm telling you, working on the budget for this time is scaring me half to death. Because our general fund does not have enough money to sustain us. Um, I, I do not like where we are currently on our general fund. Now, here toward the end of June, we're going to get our first distribution on the property taxes that's going to help us and that has to run us until December when we get it again. But with what has been cut on the property tax, we do not know financially how that's going to affect us yet. So as I said in my email, I am even proposing no raises across the board. Because, well, July twenty-third is when I will have my meeting with DLGF and present our proposed budget. And she will tell me then with the revenue information that she's aware of, whether that budget is sustainable or not. And once before, they told me come twenty twenty-six, twenty twenty-seven, our budget was not gonna be sustainable as it currently is. So I don't know what to expect. Well, then, as taxes are paid in twenty twenty-six, and we won't receive that money until June of twenty twenty-six and December of twenty twenty-six, if it's cut very much, we're not gonna have enough money and I don't know how we're gonna live. So we need, we've got to be making some decisions. So at least be thinking about it. Um, the next meeting, I will present the draft budget. We have to increase our health insurance line, uh, up to about ninety-six thousand and hope that it covers. We have to increase our liability line. So when I got our insurance notice from the township trustee for the fire department, our insurance for the fire department over there just about doubled. And that, that's a big hit. That is huge. So those are two big areas. We need to increase our personal services line, which is attorney and CPA is where I usually do all of that. We were short in twenty twenty-four by seventy-nine hundred dollars. So I need to increase that, um, I think I'm looking at up to, it's at thirty-eight now, I think I was looking at up to maybe somewhere forty-two, forty-four. When you start adding all these things up, it's huge. So be thinking about options. Because I am not sure that what we have been doing, I'm not sure that we're gonna have the money to do it. We're gonna have to figure out something. Um, one of the other things that I need to do, uh, actually two or three different things. When you look at the appropriation sheet, that Sarah's got one of them in her hand now, on MVH, the way we have money currently appropriated, we have an appropriation line, which is for our street department supplies and doing things. It's three thousand and some dollars in the negative. So I really need to do an additional appropriation to cover that up. And, well, that's not the right way to put it, but to fix that, I guess, so that it's in the positive. So that's paperwork I'm gonna need to be working on. Um, it was voted to take ten thousand dollars out of the deputy clerk line and put over into other services to take care of paying for Jeff. And he is, he is keeping track of time that he spends perhaps doing something on sewer, doing something on water. So when he turns his bill in, he'll tell me that so much money was for water, so much was for sewer. And then I pay accordingly out of those funds for those things. Um, but anyway, since that decision was made, I need to go ahead and do proper paperwork to move that money out of the wage line over into that services line. Then, since we're fifteen thousand dollars in the hole on our insurance liability, my best option is to take the remaining sixteen thousand dollars out of that deputy clerk and put that over there to take care of it. Because when I hit my fancy little button at the end of the year and it automatically takes care of anything in the negative, I don't think there's gonna be enough money to cover that fifteen thousand. So I need to go ahead and do paperwork now and, and take care of that. So we'll be doing that in July. Um, one more thing that I need to announce. I have made the decision that I am going to retire August thirty-first. So we need to find someone to take my place. And I figure hopefully get somebody in here. Um, if we get him in here before August thirty-first, train them as best as I can. After that, I would be willing to work with everybody to come up with a solution for me to come in and train that person. Because there's a ton of stuff that person needs to know. And we'll work it out. But hopefully they would be here then, at least September, October, November, December. Get a lot of stuff under their belt, especially just, you know, the payroll, the regular bills, that kind of thing. Um, I'll have a list of my very important people for them to call. And, um, of course, Amy will be at that list, Dan's gonna be on that list. Mike Klein Peter, because all of this stuff for the water project is not gonna be done by the end of August. And this person's gonna have to step in and do some of this stuff, so. Anyway. That's all I have.
So we have to caucus somebody in then, right? Is that how that works?
Well, we're not divided into precincts like that, so we don't have caucus stuff.
Okay.
You will appoint someone to fill the vacancy.
Okay.
Yeah.
What will their salary be starting out?
What I'm making right now. Uh, well, so it starts out, look at, we don't have the salary ordinance. Um, is it four, I think it's, is it thirty-eight thousand something or forty thousand something on the salary portion? Then I get seven hundred and fifty dollars a year stipend for longevity. So the new person will not have that. Um, let me just go get the salary ordinance real fast.
There's your chance, Max, we can move right in.
Forty thousand eight eighty-one. And then the utilities pays the clerk treasurer seven thousand twelve dollars and twenty-four cents. So that's what this person would be making. No health insurance. Unless you guys make a decision for the clerk treasurer to have health insurance. But as of right now, health insurance was not an option.
Why did that? Why did that happen?
Because of a situation that happened in the past.
She has a tenant for you. Well, our insurance plan for employees, it's, you think it's gonna, is probably gonna go up, it goes up about every year now.
Yes, anywhere from eight to ten percent.
So what about towns close to our size like Jamestown? How do they, do we know how they pay their employees?
Like how much money they make?
Know how much, how much insurance they get.
I don't know.
I just wonder what like-sized towns do about their employee insurances before we go.
In, in all, well.
Start cutting insurance, we need to.
I don't wanna say things that I shouldn't, but technically, I believe if insurance is offered to full-time employees, it's supposed to be offered to the clerk treasurer. But that's a little bit more of a legal thing that I prefer to not delve into at the moment. So that's a, up to council.
Amy, do you work with Jamestown or any other little town around?
Advance.
Advance is a little bit smaller, important.
Yeah.
Do they carry insurance for their employees?
Um, I'll have to check. I'll have to check with Sherry. I can do that, I can ask her to get with Crane and comparements.
Yeah, I'd like to know what other, other small towns around.
Yeah.
Might do for their employees, whether we're, we're, uh, the same above, below.
Yeah.
Before we start making the decision to cut things. Unfinished business, Lions Park usage.
Oh, excuse me, let me back up. I provided everybody with the timeline on the budget. So you're gonna have to really make sure you pay attention to that timeline because some of this stuff's gonna have to be done when I'm not here. And somebody's gonna need to make sure that it's happening.
The unfinished business, Lions Park usage.
Are we anywhere yet on language with that?
I'm not sure.
Are we anywhere with language yet on some kind of an agreement with the Lions Park?
Uh, we, we had sent, some sent to us and I was looking for if I hadn't gotten finished up yet.
Oh, okay, so they kind of.
I haven't gotten this any yet.
Okay, so they kinda sent you a rough, rough draft of something then? Okay.
Okay, town five.
Uh, I revised the flyer. You have to all have one.
Yeah.
Post them everywhere we can get one posted. I have, uh, met with the library, everything's set up there for people to go get the application and the, uh, you have the guidelines for it. Um, I do have one new thing. I had a business place here that was all excited to have her granddaughter make a flyer. However, her granddaughter lives in Lebanon. And I said, well, she can't do it. We agreed that it's a town, townspeople only. So she said, that's fine, we'll just do it into the business. So. What do you wanna do about that? Just say, okay?
In fact, we, um, we, we've heard that an employee up there, this has did it.
Right. Okay. Other than that, it's all underway.
Thank you. CBG signature pages.
I'll say, actually, that's all taken care of, so we don't have to do anything.
I'm fellas, project contract updates. You say we had something to sign?
Nothing, uh, well, nothing to sign quite yet tonight. I think I had sent, um, the council just this afternoon, the two that I had drafted for, the two bidders that got us all of their information back. We have a third now that has gotten all their information back and potentially a fourth. So, um, all the contracts are essentially gonna look the same. So those are all in draft form and with the bidders, with, you know, my proposed draft. And I told them it's subject to the council's approval. So what I would suggest you do if you are inclined tonight is to entertain a motion to authorize Grumpy to sign these contracts subject to legal, um, negotiations and review. So that'll enable Grumpy to sign them between now and your next meeting, once we get all the negotiations finished up with them.
I have, I have a motion to allow me to sign the contracts.
Those are for the ready project, right?
Yes, yes, these are for the ready project. These are the four, um, bids that you accepted at your last meeting, contracts with those four bidders.
I dated the motion to allow Grumpy to sign the necessary documents, um, pending legal review and negotiation.
Another second.
Second, second.
Long favor. Motion passes.
Alrighty. I'll take five, five is the only one that has signed those right now.
They have signed?
They have signed, yeah.
Okay, great, yeah, okay, then Grumpy can sign.
Uh, Grumpy can sign the one that, and they've already signed, alright. If you would go ahead and sign this one.
They need to print the money in the northwest, too.
I can do that later, yeah, okay. Yep, they can do it now, I hear. Alright, data for people please.
So fifteen, sixteen?
Sixteen. Alrighty. And as we get the other ones. Okay, there's that.
Okay, so take care of that.
Yes.
Arbor agreement, the final draft has been received.
Nope, that's with Arbor now and their attorneys. I just, um, communicated with their attorney the other day to ask for an update and he said that they have a revised draft that they're gonna be getting back to me.
Let's take it right now. Uh, employee handbook, PTO.
Okay. Here a while back, we talked about our PTO days and the situation that we discovered. Um, it, it's been Um, it, it's been through three weeks, and I sent a copy of this out to the council, uh, just to saying, hey, here's what I come up with. You know, replied directly to just me, let me know what you think. And Gary's the only one that responded, and he thought that it looked okay. So, what I have proposed, um, starting in July, a person that would be hired in July could have seven days. And of course, they have to put in their ninety-day probation period first. If they start in August, they would get two days. If they started in September, they would get three days. October, November, December, new hires would have zero days because starting January one, they're gonna get eleven days. So, if you agree with that, um, what I have done, I have just simply taken the page directly from the handbook, made those corrections. And if you vote that in, then I will make a copy of this, and I'll, I'll mark it up here that it was updated, put today's date on it, and make sure everybody has a copy.
How many, how many, you know, how... How many days do they normally get, eleven days per year?
For, yeah, when they're first, yes. So, you'll see, they're on the left. And then, when you look down below, that shows, um, their years of service and what they get.
Well, the only reason why I ask is you said, which kinda makes sense when you said October, November, December, they get zero days. You made the comment because they have to complete their ninety-days probation period anyway. So, if they're hired in January, they still have to complete their ninety-days probation, but you're still gonna give them...
They still get the eleven days.
Starting after March, starting in March.
Correct.
Starting April.
Or April, yeah.
Yeah, after their ninety days, then they would get the eleven days to use the rest of the year.
But you're saying, eleven, seven days left if they hire in in July. So, they got July, August, and September. And then they got seven days between September and, you say, end of December?
Yes, that's what you're saying. So, they were hired in July, they would have ninety days, it'd be July, August, September. So, no, October, November, December, they'd have seven days.
Yeah. And if you don't like that, then you just need to vote on something different.
You guys got anything down there, consider, any discussion? Somebody wanna make a motion to accept a change of PTO days?
I'll make a motion to accept the adjusted PTO days.
Your second?
My second.
One in favor?
Aye.
Close?
All righty, we'll take care of that.
Okay, we're down to new business before we start that. Dan, do you have anything you wanna discuss?
Uh, just a couple things. Uh, Earl, Ben, and I, and one of our guys, Chris Miller, went out to Westfall Place. Uh, they have installed all the center sewer lines. They've done, uh, they've not tested anything. So, we're gonna start testing either late this week or next week, and we'll make sure we're there, and we should have been looked for and all that sort of thing. And then, the water main has not started yet. They plan on tapping their existing water main next week. And that's important, and we'll be there for that. And then, uh, the lift station, they have not put any parts and pieces in there yet. They just have the concrete wet well started. So, we'll be on top of all that as well. Um, we'll help Ben along with some of the inspection. Um, and then the second thing, uh, I guess we're signing with CBG, Horn. Um, we're moving forward with the private town owns, the well field in the woods. We used to have to clear the woods and practice until October to do that, but I've been getting the rest from starting. So, other than that, I think we're all good. Anybody have any questions?
I gotta cut the comment, but I wanna hear from Jeff about, did you get a phone call in with the guy in Canada?
I did talk to him, yes. And he's a willing seller, and he's willing to discuss, uh, having the appraisals done, see what they come back at. He's not locked in on the price that he spoke about early on. Um, but, uh, he wants to be fair to the town, he wants to be fair to his family, what his comment was.
Well, if you talk to him again, Tom, the fair thing is, he can donate the ground. Otherwise, we don't need it.
Well, don't say that. When, when's our lease expire with him? Because that's where our wells are currently, right?
Yeah, I, we, I think, Eddie and I have discussed, we think we need to recreate that lease anyway because it is so open-ended that there's, there's no detail in it. So, there probably needs to be better language and maybe even a survey done to know exactly what, um, we've got leased from them. The other thing I would say is, you know, Dan and I talked about, uh, clearing the wood, but we don't really have any idea what that cost is gonna be yet. So, it, you know, it may be a situation where the cost of clearing the woods gets prohibitive as well. So, uh, he doesn't, he doesn't feel like it's that, that much, but, I mean, we probably won't know that till we get a bid on it. Um, so, I mean, if, if you would like me to reach out to some companies and see if I can get a couple of bids on clearing the woods, I'll get Matt from Dan to know exactly what he wants done.
My thought is, we, we would, uh, put that out to Farnetown people that want firewood and let them, I mean, it's gonna have to be fit into a time period that we agree with, but there's no sense of us just cutting down trees or bulldozing trees over and letting them go to waste. If people here in town wanna burn wood, if they wanna go down and take trees down, I don't see a problem in that unless there's some kind of a legal problem.
I'd like to talk to the insurance company about that first.
Yeah, yeah, I think that's a big liability issue.
What are we doing, uh, we'll have to state whatever we want, but, so...
Yeah.
We should probably meet out there and stick it, put some plaques out there, and, and...
Yeah, last week, Cora and I went out there and walked around and took a look at it. So, we're familiar with what Dave's talking to us about, who wants to... But that pretty steep hill.
Yeah, just deep hill, but that whole hill's full of springs.
Yeah.
There's water everywhere out there that, that, I know I used to ride that on a dirt bike, and there, there's springs all through that hill, all the way to forty-seven.
Yeah, it just makes it more challenging on the clearing of the leaves.
And you go all the way down.
So, going forward with the route of putting it on the town-owned property now doesn't preclude the town from continuing to explore the possibility of purchasing the land, you know? Because I think, and Jeff can speak to this, there might be some longer-term benefits to purchasing this land, you know, that you might not want to just wave off without exploring.
Yeah, one of the things you gotta think about is, is if, if twenty years from now you need to expand this field again, whether or not it can be done on the town-owned land, or are they not be able to be? Um, and the cost of doing it then, or buying it then, is gonna be a lot more than the cost of buying it now.
Well, but if you, if you take a look at that land, it goes all the way to Center Prairie Creek. Well, there's a considerable amount of land to drill a well and move far enough away and drill another well. We've already protected ourselves in that.
I mean, Grumpy, you're right, there's probably enough for two to three wells.
Yeah.
I think it, since we can't really do a whole lot of water cover on that, um, we, we oughta go ahead and pursue the, at least the adjustment of the lease, potentially buying the property. I think you still move forward, and that's up to you guys, but it seems like we could do two things. We, we've got property to do what we need to do. But you, you already have wells on the, the property that's leased, that's cleaned up. So, regardless, you can at least pay that incentive.
When, when does the lease expire?
Not for like another hundred years or something, so...
Oh, it's that long?
Yeah. It's just the...
The problem, the problem we see with the leases, there's really no definition of what you're leasing. It just says you can use the wells. And it, it's written a hundred and twenty years ago, so...
Yeah, there's not a real good description of the area that's leased, and there's not a really good description of what you can do within that leased area, so...
Is there anybody else that's got a copy of, not, not that particular lease, but is there another, is there another piece of paper describes what you're saying we don't have someplace? We don't know that.
Oh, another lease, well, there's nothing else that's recorded.
But there's gotta be. How did we get a lease? The guy just says, yeah, go ahead and drive down there.
No, I think, there were two...
It was written very much, it was written very much like a right-of-venture document.
It was. And then I think, I think maybe there was an eminent domain kind of process that was started at some point, and they reached an agreement to not pursue that. And so, then the lease is expanded as part of that agreement. You know, it's just kind of language in there that, we're not gonna take your land, but you're going to allow us to do X, Y, and Z. And some of it is not even what we're doing right now, right? It was like the, yeah. So, it's just, I mean, it addressed the needs at the time, but it wasn't very all-encompassing. I mean, I think...
Realistically, you'd be looking at probably maybe four thousand dollars in real estate to get it done, to get to a point where you know exactly what value the land is. And then you go back to the guy and say, are you interested at this price? If not, then you enter, you can't enter into a eminent domain process, and he's aware of that. I talked to him about that.
So, the appraisals are for the purchase, right?
Yeah.
I mean, so that's, that's what you...
We gotta pay, why doesn't he pay for the appraisals?
Because he doesn't have to sell the land. It's, it's the town wanting it, so that's, that's very standard.
We don't have to buy the land either.
You don't?
So...
It's just a decision you got, I mean, it's...
Got a Mexican standoff, seems to me like. I agree, I agree with, we need something more delineated than what we, what we have access to. I agree with that. But we got, I mean, everybody in this town's gonna be dead before that lease runs out.
No argument about that.
You could revisit the purchase in the future, but for now, we can sign the document saying it's gonna go on. Yeah, but that just still keeps your options open.
Well, I, since we're at this point, I'd like to make a motion that we, it's, for the council, that we, uh, accept the well on our own property on the one we're going to put in. And I'll make that motion now, so Dan knows that that's what we're gonna do. Your second? Discussion?
I thought we were still trying to decide what was the best options for location wise, right?
Either one works.
But there are still some unanswered questions, so...
Well, I think we have to pursue what Grumpy mentioned because we've got a sign with CBG for. So, for now, I think that's fine, let's put it on the property of the town owners. But I think you can still pursue or revise the lease and potential purchase. But to do that, you've gotta get a couple of appraisals. You guys spend some money and do that. But we're fine using the town-owned property.
We, we would really wanna look at this other property if we find out there's a prohibitive cost to clearing it then.
That's another...
Yes.
So, we're gonna make that decision without, without, we don't know the cost of clearing the ground.
You can always change your mind.
We can change that, but...
Yeah.
But as of right now, it is...
Our, we just wanna make sure that if we need to... But you're wanting for time's sake, because it'd be things signed and all that.
Right, and, and, and Dan knows what to look at in order to proceed with where we're, we think we're gonna put this.
Thank you, sorry. Uh, I made a motion that we, seeing we're all on the town-owned plan.
You already made the motion?
I made that motion.
Oh, you made it, I thought you were entertaining it, or asking, I second that.
Good.
Sorry.
Well, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. So, you, you're on the way to, you're on the way to over the hill.
All right, I'm good.
Anybody else have anything?
I do. Um, I spoke with, uh, the company that is looking into the sewer district for the county. Um, Atlanta, Virgus, obviously, is that how you say it, I think so. Um, and she would like to start getting some meetings started, and would like to have a couple of members of the council meet with, with her and myself, possibly Dan, um, and some different utilities. I think it'd be good to have that meeting preliminarily first here. She kinda wanted to have it with the county commissioner, but I think it'd be better if we had a discussion with her here, so you all understand exactly what they're trying to accomplish before we get into something bigger.
I'm glad you brought that up, though, that was something I had a question to ask you about. And I think that, that what you're saying is great. I mean, I look forward to having a meeting because I would rather, if we had our druthers and we had the money from the county to help out, I'd rather we had the project here than we put it out there next to sixty-five.
Yeah, the, the, the only thing is, is it's gonna be a little bit more difficult to put the total control back in the hands of the town. It's gonna have to be probably a district board that controls that. Still a good project, I think. I personally think it saves both the town and the county quite a bit of money.
The town, the town would have somebody on the board, right?
Absolutely. I told her that, that's a no-go. The town would not participate if, if they didn't have equal representation on it. So, um, I just need a couple people to, to do that.
Yeah, I'd be happy to.
Did you say what the name of that company is that you were...
BCS, does that sound correct?
Yeah.
BCS, uh, consulting. Every, all these companies have, these letter initials, it's hard to keep them all straight.
I think you can write away, maybe...
I'm gonna try to do it next two weeks. I'll get something set up, and I'll send out some emails. Uh, is there a time, date you guys prefer?
Not on Wednesday.
Not on Wednesdays? Okay. Um, end of the day, beginning of the day?
I can usually counter to the day.
Okay, it's D V. Just noticed, okay.
I can also...
All right, I'll work with her on that, and I'll talk to Dan, we'll see.
You go down, you go down and work at the shop, won't you?
I probably could.
Okay.
I'd work on my own. Um, one other thing that, uh, I talked to Grant about when we were sitting down for budget discussion, um, if you guys are interested, I don't want any kind of answers tonight. I just want you to think about, I, I've worked with a young lady who does, um, she's got her Sherman, uh, certifications for HR. And, um, she'd be happy to help us out with language in the, in the handbook going forward, if that's something everybody's interested in doing. And she has a small, she's creating a small consulting firm to do that. Just something to think about, nothing... Just something to think about, nothing, nothing her team. And she would also be there for questions, uh, related to HR law, so.
Good. Is that it?
That's all I have.
Anybody else got anything on the board? I heard a motion called.
No, you can't. This has to be signed.
I don't hear a motion called yet.
And are you, are you proposing an executive session?
For what?
I don't know, your mom told me earlier, you wanted an executive session.
Oh, well, I haven't, I haven't seen, talked to Randy yet.
Okay, because we have to have forty-eight hours posting for that.
Well, if we do it right now, we know by Thursday.
Yeah, post it first thing in the morning.
Twenty minutes, thirty-seven, thirty seconds session.
Yeah.
Got it.
That is one thing, nineteen.
Most stuff we got to do.
We're gonna move on to claims, yeah.
Are you, any, any other things?
Eric.
Where's your, where's the payroll?
Here.
Oh, you got it, sorry.
Where's that? Where's that one? Was that all of them? You got all of them?
That's just, yeah, just, I think it's a claims.
Okay, I need to go print on an executive session thing, so that you can tell me what box we're doing.
Well, I have to ask, anyone knows, anyone knows what we're doing.
So I know what you're, because I don't think I have to be there.
Right now, we're in a war.
How good's the woods, this, right? Yeah.
Okay.
You know, why?
Yeah, that's-
Why? Alright, well, that explains it.
Yeah. Yeah, that's the same.
Yeah, okay. Okay, I'll, so then this, we have to-
We have nine, four, and four people, we've got a little bit of this.
Like your partner said, so. And then they have a, it's a, it's actually-
I play my own really good players, but I like playing.
No litigation.
I talked to Amy about it, so she said, it's okay, I, I don't know what, I'm gonna do it personally.
Okay, so we've got, uh, it's to receive information concerning an individual's alleged misconduct and to discuss or report a determination, the individual's status as an employee. So I think that's the only one.
Okay, are we good? Okay, thank you.
She, whatever, she's not standing with her, she's very useful at that.
Okay, so Mr. Jeff?
There, where's that?
Okay. Then I think we'll all sign.
Randy, thanks for getting that down.
I need to sign this.
Yes. Jeff's gonna check on something else, um, for me. This is, so this is the title search on the Vexill property, the title search that we got back today. My grant administrator. It looks like a title search that I'm familiar with, really? So I just checked with him to make sure.
Do, do what?
I think they did a title search on both the properties, from what I can gather, because Hopkins and Woods is Vex.
That's Vex.
And then the next page-